Call the meeting to order at 4:01. And we are going to open up the public input period per RSA 18974. If anybody has any public input, just let us know. Open there. All right, any announcements? Financial report.
I am going to try to speak to that where Molly and Michelle could not make it tonight. You can see the top left corner is the change in from the last board meeting. We did, the trust fund did release some of the funds. If you look over on the top right, it's sort of your projected unspent balance of 75, but after she created this financial for you, we did encumber about $1,0500 for some services for students. So your expected end of year unspent revenue was around 65, not 75. That's about it? That's about it? That's all I have?
Questions?
I don't have any.
Pretty straightforward stuff today. A couple of announcements from the SAU colleague of Mr. French's and his school are going to be recognized as the 2023 New Hampshire Elementary School of Excellence at the upcoming Petty's Award on June 3rd. There would be Swayze Central School. Congratulations, like, and they knocked it out of the park this year. And rightfully recognized, pulled out of the pool of several other schools. So we're excited about that. We have five tables worth of tickets purchased already because we also have Dr. Pam Carr, who's the principal at the Coe School of Technology, who is being recognized as the Denise Masulowski Award from Plymouth State University. And that award is created in 2008 memory of Denise Masipowski, a former associate vice president for the College of Graduate Studies, and exemplifies extraordinary educational leadership in the state of New Hampshire. So as an adjunct instructor, serving as a principal, PSU has recognized her for her service. And so some news around the SAU 16, which is really positive. We wanted to make sure we share that with all of our communities. So we're asking all of our boards to just allow that to get out into the ether on the air. So I do have one resignation, two resignations. One I'd like to share in non-public after we do have another item for non-public. Both fall under the same reason, letter A. The other resignation I would like to share with you today is Colleen Lukash has decided to resign from her position predominantly for child care. And really loves being with her kids, and who doesn't? And so she is choosing not to return next year. And so we'll be posting if not posted already. And we'll have a qualified candidate for that position to start with us for the beginning of next year. And I would ask the board for action after the non-public for both of the resignations or action at that time. Just to make it more convenient for you. And short of just working our way between April vacation and graduation is a grueling sprint. I know you know that, Mr. Oco, still being on a campus. And so everyone's been focused on ensuring that our students are where they need to be in order to move on to the next grade level. All the spring activities that go along with the close of school, certainly from the high school level right down into elementary schools. And you see all of the displays out in the hallway of student work. It's just been a super busy time. We're in a great spot for hiring across the SAU. We've hired some highly qualified specialists. Very few classroom teachers are needed. This year, we had fewer than, I think, 10 retirements across seven school districts. So we still remain a valued employer or a well-sought employer. For each of the positions that we have posted, we'll see an average of 25 to 40 applications for specialist positions. Special ed lower because there are fewer special educators looking to move. But for classroom teaching positions at the elementary level, we get up to 90 or 100 applications. So I think we'll be in good stead in hiring for the position here. I know that Dr. Bennett and Mr. French are working hard at making sure that that happens. And lastly, the transition that we've been working on from my role on my way out, Dr. Asbell taking over as superintendent. I think it's important to note that for East Kingston, Dr. Bennett will be moving in as the Desme. And she and I have worked a lot together on all that goes into ensuring that the board is in a good place, well-informed, protected under policy of law. And then that transition that Renee and I have worked on, I think, has gone quite well. And we'll continue to do that. And we'll talk more about that on Monday night, the joint board, on the overall transition. But it's been very much a piece of our work. Certainly a few times a week, if not every day, where we answer questions or ask questions and consult with each other. So that should be fairly seamless, and we're looking forward to that. As everyone's looking forward to summer. I think I just heard someone say that. Early. And there are probably some other people in this room as well.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Did EKEES get a School of Excellence?
Swayze Central School.
Got the School of Excellence?
In Brentwood, yes.
Okay. And we were nominated?
No, we were not nominated. But that is, I would hope, short on the horizon because the work that East Kingston has done just in the last 18 months. I mean, it's always been a quality school, but the way that they've come out of COVID and the way that they've accelerated, particularly in the area of reading and literacy and the culture and climate here, that's been noted. And when we get the report from Tom on educating the whole child, I think you'll see, people will actually see the shifts and the changes and the potential. And I think that this school is well poised to be recognized for that.
Right. I just want a clarification that it was not East Kingston.
Swayze Central School in Brentwood.
Congratulations.
Yes. And that concludes my report. That'll give us on approval minutes. I did have one, and I'm not sure where to put it. I thought we had talked about I was going to do safety and security, and I didn't see it in the notes. It still has you listed on it. I wasn't able to make the one meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I'm not sure how we update in that in the minutes. Because I don't really see where that was.
Maybe 8A.
We'll make sure we capture that. I recorded that on the agenda, and Sharon might have just missed that. That's all. So we'll make sure that we capture that. We still have the video as well if you have to look at that. All right. Yeah. And then that just leads into later on in the chair's report. And I missed this when I approved this. Safety and security should be listed as. Got it. We'll make it happen. All right. Do you have any other notes?
I do have some. So I got Dr. Renee Bennett was in attendance at last month's meeting.
I was.
Okay. So she needs to be added. And under Health Insurance GMR, Health Trust Will needs to be changed to Health Trust Would. On General Assurances, it should say Dr. Ryan explained that these are assurances that needed to be provided every year. Every needs to be added. Under Old Business Policy IHBAB, Special Education Evaluations, Kingston needs to be changed to Kensington. Under New Business, Tiffany DeBrio reported out on committees, not communities. That same paragraph, it says help youth in the district to be able to sign up for sports, not school. And that's all I have.
Mr. French. All right.
Oh, we didn't. We have to prove minutes.
Oh. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll make a motion to approve the April 12th board meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
In the principal's report that was in your packet, as of Monday, we had 20. We are expecting kindergarten as the best plan in adoption number one. So I just wanted to update you. So we have 21. We're expecting here in the fall. Our current enrollment numbers in kindergarten, we have 23 students, first grade 26, second grade 12, third grade 21, fourth grade 20, fifth grade 29, total of 131. I just really want to thank our PTO for the teacher appreciation we had here for our wonderful staff here. They went above and beyond recognizing all the great things that our teachers and our current professionals and support staff are doing here. And on behalf of them, I just want to thank in public our PTO for the work that they did. I also, throughout the budget season, we talked a lot about the support staff and all the great things that they do here. And throughout those conversations, our classroom teachers, if you recall Mrs. Miller, on behalf of classroom teachers, talking deliberative about that. And as we've had our one-two team present, I think in February or March, and then as Tool at our last meeting, I had asked some of our teachers if they would be interested in just really coming to the board to talk about what they do in their buildings, or I'm sorry, what they do in their classrooms. And our two kindergarten teachers, Sharon Norman and Erica DeLuis, are here tonight to give you just a snapshot of what goes on. There's videos so you can see kind of how things work with our support staff, with our interventionists, with our paraprofessionals. And they're here to do that tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll be up there to incorporate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Sharon Norman.
Hi, Mary Lou.
We have two kindergarten teachers here at East Kingston. We want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. We just want to talk to you about the importance of our paraprofessionals and our specialists in this school. They really are an integral part of our school community. So we are going to list the names so you know who everybody is, and then we'll have like a little slideshow so you can put a piece of the name.
All right. So our paraprofessional staff and other support staff in the building are Melissa Wall, Rosalie Goodwin, Erin Pitnato, Barb Hawke, Hannah Hoffmaster, Mary George, Jody Gomez, Morna Magrello, and Bethy Guffridge.
And the professional staff who work with their students every day. Kelly Dusel, she's our occupational therapist. Alyssa Gagnon, who is our speech pathologist. Jess Casey is our special education teacher. Erica Hill is also a special education teacher. Trish Merrill is our school psychologist. Kristen Schuster, our reading specialist right over there. And Paige Tool, our guidance counselor. And Cheryl Teton is our math interventionist. So if you haven't had the pleasure of meeting all of these people, we are going to have a slideshow that will put up the faces of these.
All right. So this is how some of our support staff and interventionists help us out during our literacy blocks in our classrooms. We're going to show you what it looks like in our kindergarten classrooms, but they, support staff and paraprofessionals are in all of our classrooms throughout the school. So they run literacy centers, and we have a focus concept of the week typically in kindergarten. So then in those small literacy groups, they might focus on letter formation, reading and spelling of high-frequency words with the kids, work with students to read, and they're weekly decodable readers that go along with our OG program. Help students stay focused on a topic and feel successful when they're completing their writing pieces. And helps students to stretch sounds and write words in sentences.
And this is how support staff and interventionists help us during math. So they will be helpful in running math centers focusing on the following, working with students to reinforce new skills and concepts in small groups, support small groups during math games, and one-on-one or small group remediation of taught skills and concepts.
And in general, they help us out a lot. So support staff and interventionists help us during whole-class instruction. They support the classroom teacher and aid students who need assistance in staying engaged with the lesson. Support staff make meaningful connections with all students across the school, not just in the classrooms they are assigned. They are the bridge that connects students beyond the classroom setting. So during lunch recess, during Unified Arts and other unstructured settings and throughout the school. They support students who are in need of academic, emotional, behavioral breaks like walks or movement breaks in the hall, which allows the teacher to continue with their instruction with the rest of the class. They are an important part of our collaborative meetings for students in need of modifications because they work with those students daily. And beyond all this, many paraprofessionals volunteer their time for extracurricular activities like our school play and programs like Girls on the Run.
So here it is in action in our kindergarten classrooms. So this is going to give you a glimpse into our two kindergarten classrooms. It'll be a mixture of video and photos of showing the teachers and paraprofessionals and the specialists working with our students. Just to each other, someone's got a word. All right. I tell me.
Oh, that is a really good X.
They have this one.
Nice work.
So as you can see, it really does, that pan out at the end, it really does provide a focused environment where everybody is getting direct instruction and support. So it's just, they're such an important part of our school. We can't stress it enough. It takes many people to provide a safe, healthy environment for children. We firmly believe that it takes a combination of teachers, interventionists, and support staff to provide the security children need to develop and flourish to be able to realize their hopes and dreams. Thank you so much for your time.
So I have any questions?
Oh, yeah.
I have a question. You know, there's plenty of evidence that shows, right, low ratios, right? So you count your paraprofessionals and your support staff for lowering your ratios per pupil, per space. And I know that many of you have received training for OG and other things that have happened. I'm just curious about when we, when you onboard paras, if paras are receiving the same instructional practices so that the communication and the line and the thread of training the kids in this direct instruction stays consistent, right? Because if the paras are in there doing multi-sensory spaces, are they learning the same strategies that the direct instruction teachers are learning? And maybe not being outsourced for professional learning, but even in-house where there's some mentoring going on and onboarding?
Yeah. It's definitely more in-house, either with the classroom teachers that were trained or with the interventionists who are also of the experts in that field. So it's more of an in-house thing. We have sent paraprofessionals over the years to do specialized training in, what was it recently?
Live letters?
Live letters. So things like that where we recognize the need, we will send them outside of the school for that, but most of it's in-house.
Yeah. And again, the reason I ask is for consistency for the kids, right? They're going to get better and confident if that consistency's there.
Absolutely. And we, so we work with, because we each have like a certain paraprofessional in our class, which is great. So we work with them each individually. And the things that too, that they might do at their center might not be the super technical, like things within OG, like that I would reserve for myself, or Kristen would do. So it's definitely things that they're more than capable of doing.
Sure.
Absolutely.
And we also, as classroom teachers, model at the beginning of the year so that they can get the routine down so that it is consistent when they're in a small group.
I mean, Mr. French observed me, and probably you as well, but I mean, wasn't, if your words were, it was a well-oiled machine, right?
It's more the rotation. Sure, Watson.
You guys are moving. Yes. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both. That was awesome.
All right. I just have one thing.
Good.
What do we typically, I know we had a number of students add kind of over the summer. Is that, was that typical last year, or was it my way off?
Are you talking about kids coming in that we don't expect?
Into kindergarten?
Oh, yeah. We, I mean, we're expecting probably 25 or so by the time we come back in September. Yeah. Particularly a few that we don't know about that live in the community.
Yeah. That's what I was getting at. Okay. All right. You got anything else?
Nope. That's it.
Onto chair's report. So before I get into board committee assignments, the Teachers Association has emailed me with an intent to bargain. I would ask that you two, between now and the next meeting, go on the website under School Board Information. If you're that page, you can find a link to the existing teachers agreement. If you could review it before the next meeting. Thank you. Board committee assignment. Superintendent Evaluation Committee will be the first one. We met on the 12th, so Friday of last week. We elected a chair. Allison's going to be the chair. We discussed how to close out the existing goals for Dr. Ryan, and how that's going to go about. And from there, basically, we set a timeline for what our goals are going to be like moving forward. We're going to get into it in more detail in the joint board's meeting, but that's kind of a quick overall. We're going to try to meet monthly the evaluation, and we're going to try to get a little more information from the boards and also earlier request information from the boards as far as what you guys, what each individual board is willing to see on the evaluation. And I think that's about it for that meeting. What do we got next? That'll be you.
Policy. So Policy Committee, we have a lot of policies tonight. So I'm just going to go over them briefly. The first policy is EBCG, and it is a new policy. Policy EBCG is a new comprehensive policy to address communicable diseases and replaces policy IHAMC. And that's, that policy is going to be recommended to be withdrawn. The policy addresses the inclusion and exclusion of students and employees when communicable diseases are present. It also outlines the expectant procedures related to reporting, response, and practice, including confidentiality and data privacy. IMG notice is only for Exeter and Kensington. We already have that policy. It doesn't need to be revised at this time. IMGA is service animals in school. This is a review revision of a current policy. In summary, the NHSBA revised sample policy IMGA to add clarity and to reflect emerging interpretations of applicable statutes and regulations. This policy has been expanded to provide definitions, including miniature horses, which is required per the 2010 revised ADA regulations, expectations for administrative review and removal or exclusion of service animals from school. The revised new policy allows greater transparency for individuals with disabilities as well as administrators who must oversee compliance with the policy. Policy JLC is student health services and nurses. This is a review revision of a current policy. Revisions to JLC include changes to reflect the requirement that school nurses have DOE certification, clarification and better organization of some of the responsibilities relative to school nurses and school health services in general. JLCB immunization of students, review revision of a current policy. And so this revised JLCB due to an amendment to an RSA that removes the requirement that a parent's request for religious exemption to immunizations required for school attendance be motorized. So basically, you no longer have to have motorization on a religious exemption. In short. So an additional recommendation is to withdraw JLCBR. Policy reference is the DHHS School Immunization Requirement Document. So it's recommended to be pulled off the policy list and a dependent appendix reference to be provided in JLCB to this link where the document will be posted each year. So you'll see JLCB on the website, and then it will have a link to current updated Department of Health and Human Services website instead of a list of like, you know, all the shots that you would need. Policy JLCC, this is head lice and pediculosis. This is a review or revision of our current policy. It's revised to generally reflect the most current advice and recommendations from the American Association of Pediatrics and the National School Nurses Association relative to minimal health risks from lice nets and detrimental effects of exclusion. This policy outlines the expectation for screening, management of diagnosis, and criteria for returning to school. Policy JLCD and JLCDR, administering medication to students. their review revision of a current policy. It's revised to reflect the importance of safety in administering medications to students. It's a general organization of the policy, removal of redundant provisions, and clarification of perspective authority and better alignment with other policies. Revisions reflect enactment of RSA, of an RSA, all regarding self-administration of certain medications. Policy JLCD, Medical Treatment, Parent Consent. This is a review revision of a current policy. JLCD is provided as a result of House Bill 1244, which requires the student's parent guardian to provide explicit written consent for any medical or dental treatment provided in a school setting. The SAU 16 Policy Committee added a requirement to the policy to also include optical treatment. I'm not sure that we've done that since COVID, but usually the Lions Club, it would come in and like test the student's eyesight and you'd go home with a little document.
Right, they've done it since COVID.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't seen anything.
It was great, they told Hunter that he needs glasses.
Oh, really? That's great.
New glasses.
Oh, okay, that's great. So now that would just be added, so if that consent isn't given at the beginning of the year, then that consent would have to go out before, so. All right, let's see, where am I now? I think, right, so that was the last one there. Okay, so we are on to Policy JLCE, Emergency Care and First Aid. This is a new policy. So SAU 16 District does not currently have Policy JLCE. It does have Policy EBBC titled the same. However, the model policy previously had this topic separated into two sections. Support Services EBBC and Students JLCE. The New Hampshire School Boards Association is now recommending the two policies be merged into one version, JLCE, and withdraw EBBC. The new policy provides the expectation that all staff understand the protocols needed in the event of an injury or emergency. And the policy allows for the district to obtain, store, and properly administer only by trained staff medication in emergency situations such as Narcan. Policy JLCI, Concussion and Head Injuries. This is a review revision. And this policy outlines provisions relating to all students, and that's specifically to students participating in sports and/or athletic programs. Policy JLCIA, Emergency Plan for Sports-Related Injuries and Additional Protocols for Athletic Participation. This is a new policy. The new policy puts us in compliance with an RSA enacted by a passage of SB 148 Part III, which requires the creation of emergency plans for sports-related injuries, protocols for gathering health records from student athletes engaging in sports, and procedures overseeing return to play following injury. And so the policies and all that recommended for withdrawal tonight would be IHAMC that we went over, JLCB-R, EBBC. So I didn't know if you had any questions, there was a lot of information in there. We met with, I believe it was a nurse in the policy committee and we kind of went over all of this. So it was pretty extensive, so yeah, it's a lot of information to get back to the school nurses.
The nurses helped with the recommended policies.
Yes.
All the school nurses had input and so they, all those good nurses had input and been writing the policies.
Okay, before they even came to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Like, one note, I think it's JLCJ and JLCA.
Do I need my glasses on? Sorry. I have mine highlighted and I did not put my glasses on, so.
Yeah, so the last two.
What did I say?
JLCI. So the last two, the concussion and the emergency plan are JLCJ and JLCA, not.
JLCI, I'm sorry. Thank you for that.
See glasses, right? Maybe I need it.
I'm sorry.
All right. You got anything, Kristen?
I do, I actually do this time, yes. So the Community Engagement Advisory Group is meeting.
Oh wait, you have anything?
Oh, for that, no.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy ECBJ, IMGA, JLCB, JLCC, JLCD, JLCD-R, JLDA, JLCE, JLJ, JLCGA.
JLCGA.
JLCGA. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then do we have to make a motion to remove? The other ones, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to remove IHAMC, JLCB-R, EBBC.
A second?
All in favor?
All right. Get all the done, correct?
All done, well done. You went the long route, but made it happen.
Yeah.
All good?
What's the short route?
Uh, make a motion to approve all policies listed on the agenda.
Remember that next time.
Then you don't leave any out.
Right.
And you could do it all at once, but you know.
Or consent, or put them on a consent agenda and take a motion to approve a consent agenda. It's all good. Everybody knows which policies we're talking about.
Safety and Security. I was not able to attend, Tiffany had my place, so.
Yes, so you did not get nominated for chair, so.
Thank you.
I thought you still had to give it or not. I didn't have to do that. Rich Kane got nominated as chair and he accepted, so that was great. He's an awesome guy. And the only, no, not too much, but we had, East Kingston got some key card access and I believe that it's either close to being done or.
It'll be done Friday.
It's going to be done on Friday. So in that grant money that we got from the state to improve security, we got some new key card access to make it a little bit easier for staff to use certain doors. So that'll be happening. And really, I don't have a big update for that. Brayden, did you have anything to add? Because you were there too.
Uh, we also got radios, we're getting radios, new radios.
Oh, radios, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, very straightforward, yeah.
Did an inventory exercise in small groups of what's working well? What do we think needs to be improved or are some ideas moving forward? So you had, I think, eight groups of the 45 people split up, coming up with great ideas, and then all of the data were synthesized and sent out to everyone on the team, so.
Yeah, and I did see that you got that email.
Yes.
Yeah, so. So full report in there.
Community Engagement.
So we are meeting Monday on the 22nd. And that will be my first meeting, so I'll report back out in June. That's what goes on there. I'm looking forward to that, actually. Can I move on to the next one? Okay. So I attended my first SAU Wellness Committee meeting. And they are drafting the wellness policy, which they're hoping, they're halfway done, kind of drafting and revising that space. They're looking at the Alliance for a Healthier Generation as their policy kind of research and backup. The District Wellness Committee is looking to review and recommend implementation of the policy, and not next year, but the year after, because they're still working on it. And it looks really specifically at nutrition, physical activity, and it says other wellness pieces. And we had a really good discussion about what other wellness pieces meant because there were a few of us on the committee that felt that mental health and social-emotional learning really needed to be addressed on that space. So we were having those conversations. They are done for the year and so we will regroup in September. They're looking to have a representative from each school on the wellness committee, so that will be coming out once the superintendent sets goals with the chair. They'll be recruiting.
All right. Anything with goal updates, Tiffany?
I do not have any.
Not yet.
All right, and no change on my end either. Old business.
None today.
No new business.
Let's forget, I'm hopeful we have Tom McGuire's report for the June meeting.
Okay.
That we call, probably have that under, we probably have that under Old Business, June meeting.
Good.
It's our goal.
Excellent. Um, before we go into a non-public, was there any community? Would you, do you guys have anything you want to say?
No.
No, go ahead.
Just if you could explain a little bit what the Community Engagement Advisory Group is, what is that?
So I'm learning too, that I haven't been to one yet.
Only in this whole thing, it's the group.
So I would, I'm gonna go to Principal French as our response.
Sure. I think it was my first year when Jamie Southier was, I was still the chair and one of his goals was to really bridge, bridge the gap between the community and our school and what's going on here. So we started this community engagement group and we asked for any volunteers from the community who want to sit in on it. We've had Dr. Branding's been part of it since our first year. Members of the community include Becky Jones, who now owns General Store, she's out now. We've had other community members in the past, Chief LePage is part of it. Me, one of our board members, Andy, I think started, you started on that?
Mm-hmm.
We've had teachers who participate. So it's just trying to figure out ways to really bring the community into our building or us to go along to the community. Some of the projects that have happened have been, oh, and our librarian was Tracy and.
Zoe.
Zoe, yeah. And now it's just Zoe and her now assistant are part of that too. So really just trying to figure out ways for our students through our legacy letters was part of that. Planting the flowers and garden beds throughout the community. Most recently.
We have the computer learning night, field night.
So, and it's just been things like that that this group talks about.
You could probably teach your tech, come on.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's doing a great job, you know, doing the newsletter and things, so that's appreciated, I appreciate that.
I had one question. And the name just, when you said Tom McGuire.
Tom, is that, did I have that right?
Tom McGuire.
Yeah.
I remember reading something about him that never explained who he is or what he does or anything. And so when you brought it up, like, I just wondered, who is he and what does he do?
Yeah, sure, yeah, Tom McGuire is a lifelong educator at the higher ed level. He's an education researcher on the framework of educating the whole child. And so he's working now on a grant from the Mirren Institute to travel to schools and assess the schools on what they're doing, the elements. There are five specific elements of educating the whole child. And he spends a day or two, at our, since he was here for two days, fly on the wall, engage in conversations with staff, families, students, naturally myself, Mr. French, and provides an assessment to the school on where they are in achieving those five elements of educating the whole child. And what we asked him to focus on specifically here was how are we using all of our space, including outdoor space, to really pull out the interests and passions of our students? So he focused a lot on that. But he had a wonderful visit, highly complimentary of everything happening here. And he'll provide us with some recommendations as well. So we're eagerly anticipating that report.
Is that report going to be made public?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, it'll be on our website, it'll happen here for the board too. Yes, thank you. And it was entirely funded through the Mirren Institute, we don't pay anything for it.
Okay.
He earns his income through the grant to do this work based on a proposal that he had submitted a few years ago.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Can I ask another question?
Here.
Does, does he, when he does that work, does he do a self-assessment? Similar to what NEAS would do where the staff or faculty do a self-assessment and then compare kind of what the perception is of the people in the building versus what he's seeing perception-wise as an outsider?
He didn't, only because, I mean, NEAS is so dense, the accreditation process is so dense. Tom's is more, here's what I saw through just this framework.
That's, I was just, I was curious to see where he was landing, how dense or how depth he got? And if the staff and faculty, parents, right, that same perception was kind of defined in the same way? But he's not doing it in that.
No, and I think some of the, some of the nomenclature in the concept or framework of educating the whole child is relatively, it's not new, but it'll be new to a lot of us. So I think to do that self-reflection, that might have been difficult, but now that we'll have a baseline, I think it'll be much easier. So that might be something that the school looks to do in the next three to five years of how we've grown towards what these elements we say we should be growing towards. It's a good idea.
He's smart.
One final question.
Yeah.
You're gonna go into a non-public session, I understand. Any idea how long it's gonna take? Is it worthwhile waiting around to hear what you talk about after you come out? Or is that just a waste of effort?
I can tell you, I hope it doesn't take long, because I gotta get to a baseball game.
Yeah, I, it won't take us very long and it's a personnel, it is a personnel matter. And so they would take action, but we'll be able to talk through that after. It's just going to be action on a personnel matter.
And I can read about it in a minute, right?
You will read about it in a minute, because we have to provide a public.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's, it's not worth delaying that grilled steak you're gonna go have right now.
I don't want Andy to miss his baseball game.
I have one more thing before we go into non-public under New Business. Sorry. I wanted to discuss the cursive handwriting and multiplication facts that were just passed, that all fifth graders are required to learn that before leaving the fifth grade. And so I didn't know if we should put that on the agenda for next month. And I didn't know when that was starting. Like, is it starting next school year?
It would absolutely be for next, next school year. There's, there's no way we would ask someone to just dig in now. But yeah, we, I think, put it on the June agenda, that'd be a great idea.
Well, because.
We can unpack it.
Yeah, I know, you know, several of my kids that went here had that when Mrs. Simmons and Mrs. Walker were here. They learned like, I think it was the no tiers cursive. And I don't believe my son, who's a fifth grader now, has learned that. And I mean, you know, throw in remote learning and such too in there. So I just didn't know if we knew already, if we had a curriculum that we were doing, or.
We don't.
Okay, so maybe next month if we could have whatever curriculum we're looking into using, if it's the no tiers still, which I think is a pretty good line, if it could be brought to the board and shared, so we can approve it.
Yeah, we'll absolutely have it on the agenda, robust conversation.
Yeah, and yeah, and same thing with the multiplication facts too. And that's all I had.
All right, that's it?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Enjoy your non-public session.
Is it gonna be at four from now on?
Next month, June 14th is at four, and then following that, we'll be going back to 5:30.
Yeah, okay, because we missed it last month. We were here at 5:30, you guys.
I have my calendar wrong.
But there were a couple other people too who came and missed it, so.
Apologies for that.
All right.
All right.
See you later.
Bye, thank you, great seeing you.
All right, I'd like to go into non-public per Chapter 91-A, 3-2, Section A, The Dismissal, Promotion, Compensation, Discipline, or Investigation of Charges of Public Employee.
Roll call vote, please.
Andy?
Tiffany?
Kirsten.
You're now in non-public at 4:49.
We're now out of non-public. All right, we're gonna make this quick. I would like to make a motion to accept Chris Benson's and Colleen Lukash's resignations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Grudgingly. Motion to accept the recommendation for a three-year contract and a 3% increase for Mr. French.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 5:24.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.